Well, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the Finance Committee meeting. Um, the ARPA meeting, Counselor Govan is part of the Finance Committee. And we're also joined by Counselor Hurst, so thank you both for joining, and we have Melanie Okobi. And Lindsay Hackett, and Melanie, what's your new title now? And um. And Lindsay is the Deputy Budget Director, okay. We got everybody, we got Paul and our staff, and Counselor Letterman is joining right now. Director of ARPA, I like, I love that. I didn't get a chance to look at your chart, um, Melanie, hi, Council President Letterman, thanks for joining.
My pleasure.
Um, we're gonna go ahead and get started, uh, we called the meeting to order at four thirty-three. So Melanie did send over a template with some, um, data demographics and awards and. I guess funding that went out and first check, second check, and things like that, so. You can go ahead and share it and explain it, and then we'll go on to some of the other items.
Happy to give me a second here while I move everything over. Can everybody see the report, the PDF?
Yes, I looked at it earlier, actually.
Great, excellent. Alright, so, um, we stuck to the same format and added the recommended changes, uh, that we had from the last meeting. So we'll go over what those are as, uh, we go through the report. So the first page on this report shows us what the total count, count is for all of the applications that we've received. And so we've categorized it by the category of funding in which it is. How many applications we've received and how many have been awarded. So the award amount has only changed by the households that were announced, but otherwise it's still the same as last, uh, two weeks ago. Um, and of course, the application, uh, amount will continue going up, so now is that's one thousand six hundred and twenty-five for the applications that have been received.
I didn't realize Healthy Homes had a hundred and seventy-four, is that because you guys moved some over?
Yeah, so a lot of the ones that we've already received, um, were asking for a lot of home repairs. And so those, uh, were, a bulk of them were moved over to the Healthy Homes program. And of course, it's open also to the public, uh, for other, whoever wants to apply for it.
Alright, before you move on, let's just, um, pause for a minute so I can make sure that Counselor Govan. And Counselor Letterman understand what the Healthy Homes program is, the four million of ARPA funds that went to that program.
Yeah, I, I would like more information on that because I have, I'm sorry, Counselor Whitfield. If I may, um, I have a few, uh, residents who actually reached out to me because they were asking about the Healthy Homes program. So I guess I, I'd like some, I guess, more information on that, thank you.
Sure, so I can give you a high-level summary, but Tina's the one who manages it, and unfortunately, she's not on the call, she's the one who could give you a little bit more detail. But generally, anybody who's looking to have any type of repairs done in their home to bring it up to code. Um, is something that would be falling under the Healthy Homes program. And so especially those that are living within the QCT area, which is the area, as we know, that ARPA is really focusing on and. Labeling as disproportionately impacted. And so if anybody has, uh, extensive home repairs that they are needing in order for them just to be in compliance with code regulations. Then that would be the type of application that they would wanna fill out. And so the application is available online, um, through Tina's, uh, website, so I could actually, uh, send that link over to everybody if, uh, if you need that. And so, uh, that's the extent of the detail she knows a little bit more, so I apologize, uh, but that is what the overview of that fund is for.
Thank you, Melanie, and Counselor Govan, I see your hand, we are gonna have Tina on. Um, at some point to go over the Healthy Homes program, probably, um, in the next two weeks. Um, but I think I might be on vacation, so maybe next three weeks, um. But we are gonna, we plan on having her to, um, explain it in more detail, because a hundred and seventy-four applications is a lot, and there's only four million over there. Um, Counselor Govan? Did we lose her? I think we did, um, the Neighborhood Economic Recovery Fund, Counselor. Um, Neighborhood Economic Recovery Fund. Who, who is the, um, administrator of that?
Tina too, so when you have that meeting, she can go over the exterior, the, we call it NERF, but the, uh, Neighborhood Economic, really, uh, Recovery Fund. Um, and the Healthy Homes one.
Okay, before we go into details, do you want to explain, um, what you guys are currently doing? Um, with the applications you have in and how you change the application and things like that, okay?
Happy to review, um, so we currently have, uh, two, well, obviously many applications. But two of which were the household and the senior applications that were available for residents to apply to. So what we're doing is we're reviewing all of the applications to verify first, who are those individuals that live in a QCT? Because per ARPA regulations, anybody who lives in the, a QCT is automatically eligible. So we reviewed all of those, uh, for both households and senior applications, we're, uh, already reached out to all of the household applicants. And we're in the process of doing so with the seniors. And the, the reason why we're reaching out is because a lot of the applications are missing the documents that we need in order to make sure that they are in fact eligible. And so we're working with them to get those done, and that's how we were able to get the sixty that were awarded, and we're still getting more and more now completed. So it'll continue to grow the amount that we are able to award so long as we get the information. Um, and also, so just because you don't live in a QCT does not mean that you are not eligible for funding through this category. And so again, ARPA stipulates that if you are low income or lower moderate, moderate income. Um, and you take advantage of federal benefits that have to do with your income, like SNAP, WIC. Uh, if you, you provide us with evidence of one of the benefits that you receive, you also will be eligible for funding. And so we're working with all of the applicants that we have received, reaching out to every single one of them, emails and phone calls. To make sure that we're getting the documents that are necessary for that. Additionally, we're making sure that we're streamlining the application process for the residents to be much simpler. We did review the existing households and seniors applications and thought there was opportunity to make it a lot more streamlined. And so what we're doing now is, if you've gone online, we took out the old applications, and we will be uploading the new application on Monday. I didn't wanna do it, uh, today, because if, God forbid, something happens and it crashes over the weekend, we wanna make sure we're here to troubleshoot anything like that. So that's why we're waiting until Monday to post that. Um, so what this is, is gonna be, instead of having the two applications, uh, senior and a household, it's just gonna be one. It's gonna be a household cash assistance program that we're asking for individuals to apply for. It's gonna be web-based and paper-based, uh, but I know a lot of the folks that we've been talking to have expressed interest in having a web-based application. Because they can take a picture of the documents and just upload it very simply, and it's easier for us to do the intake as well. But we, of course, are cognizant of those individuals that are not computers savvy, so we wanna make sure we also have a paper document for those. Um, so we're not gonna be asking for narrative information like we used to before. It's very simple, contact info, income info, here's a checklist of the documents that we need, submit. And that's pretty much where we are with that, so on Monday, uh, we're hoping to go live with that. And we will be, uh, coordinating on doing outreach efforts as well, to ensure that everybody is educated on not only those programs. But what other programs that we have, so, uh, coming soon. Up your email, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Melanie, I just wanted to make sure that we are clear that there's one application to streamline the process. But also that the amounts that were asked for in some of the household applications, meaning a senior and household, um. That's not what they're gonna get, the maximum amount that can be given in cash assistance is the amount on the federal, that, the maximum amount that was given on the federal level. And that's fourteen hundred dollars. Um, there are other programs that can be created under household, we'll get to those questions later, but before that, Counselor Hurst, I see your hand.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield, so Melanie, I won't, uh, reiterate what it is that we talked about, uh, at our meeting yesterday. Other than to say that, you know, I'm not a hundred percent sold on the idea that we've gone from issuing out grants. To issuing out, uh, loans that can be forgiven using this money. Uh, and so I know a lot, many of my questions that I have are probably better directed towards, uh, Tina. Um, so I will wait, but I guess the question that I have for you is whether there are income requirements. For any of this funding, I know you need to be in a QCT, um, track and, um. And then there are some other requirements, um, that you're gonna have that make you eligible. But what are, you know, is, is there an income restriction?
Yeah, so I can pull up the specific income guidance, but it's, uh, I'm pulling it up right now. So they come up, uh, they might, might, might mean by that is a treasury. Their definition of low income is sixty percent of the average median income for the community that you're in. So I can actually pull up what exactly those are, because I was just pulling up those numbers, they have a tool where you can pull that up. So here we go, so this is the amount that, or the threshold in which it's considered a low or moderate income threshold. Per ARPA regulations for the city of Springfield, so it shows here what the, uh, number of the household is. And then the calculation based off of that in yellow here is what they have highlighted, so low income and moderate income, these are the thresholds in which they have. And I can email this.
So, so that, that'd be great, I'd love to see that, so low income and moderate income qualify, is that, is that accurate?
Yes, and so. Correct, and so what ARPA says is that to make the burden on the administration that's doing the funds easier. If somebody can provide proof that they're in a, on an income-based program, like the ones we mentioned earlier. Then we don't have to go over, uh, income verification with them. But if there's an individual who cannot provide the proof of it, then we, then at that point, we would go over the income verification.
Okay, um, so I guess, you know, my biggest concern, and you can relay it to Tina, is that we're not. Um, is that as you're transferring these applications over to this loan program, um, which I've already stated I have an issue with. Um, if, uh, but my issue is, my hope is that we're not making the requirements even more restrictive. So that even less people can apply, and so when I start to look at that moderate level income. And then I look at, um, you know, the income eligibility for the Healthy Homes program. Uh, on its face, it doesn't appear that they align, and so maybe they do, maybe they don't. But those are some of the explanations that I want, and then when I look at the extra information that you're requiring of these individuals. If the federal government is not asking for those, you know, I, 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 I really want that explanation as to why we are. Um, so, uh, just questions probably mostly for Tina, but you certainly can relay them in advance of our meeting in the next few weeks.
Well, we could probably try to summarize them as well, and, um, cuz I am in conversation with Tina right now on a specific application. So, um, I'll also try to relay those, but if, um, someone can take them down, cuz I'm not taking them.
And I will say that part of the Treasury and OIG guidance that they have provided us is in fact, uh, making sure that the burden is on the administration. To collect information in which satisfies the thresholds in which they are stating, so if they're saying that this is a threshold. Provide the back of documentation.
Okay.
You have anything else, Counselor Hurst, if you think of something, you can always come back.
Okay, sounds good.
I have one question about the small business, cuz I don't see it on this report anymore.
It's at the bottom right here, sorry, I think I alphabetized it.
Oh yeah, it's mine, thank you, um, Counselor Govan?
Thank you so much, um, so I, I think I have some questions along the lines of what Counselor Hurst had. Regarding the income guidelines, um, and then when I'm looking at one, I think I saw for a family of four, the guideline is forty-nine thousand dollars. Which is really nothing, that's like almost living in poverty, right? For a, a four, um, so it's going to again, leave out the working-class people. People who are, who are, you know, paying taxes, taking care of what they have to take care of. And were very much affected by COVID and the pandemic. And when, I know that, when the mayor had his commercials out, you know, he said that everyone can apply. It's gonna, you know, it's gonna be commensurate with what, you know, you lost, um, and that, you know, everyone would be able to benefit. For me, it, to me, it just seems like we're perpetuating poverty again in this system. Um, you know, every system I feel perpetuates poverty, the housing system, the welfare system, banking system. Um, it just perpetuates it and just keeps it going generationally, and this is what I see happening right here. Um, so I'm just hoping that there's a way for us to, um, figure that out. So that we're not perpetuating poverty in this system right here, at least, um, partially. Um, and I know that the Qualified Census Track is going to, you know, um, automatically qualify some people. However, there's gonna be a lot of people left out in the city, you know, um, and. I just, I, I think we need to be aware of that, and we need to start thinking about how we can change that. I know that, you know, the federal government, of course, has the guidelines, which they're a major player in perpetuating poverty. Especially with, you know, the HUD system, the welfare system, um, and, you know, if we have an opportunity here in the city of Springfield to do something different. Then I think we need to start thinking about that, and those are my comments, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Govan, and I agree with you, uh, this, these are concerns that not only has come from us, but other cities and towns that we've talked to. Unfortunately, these are the guidelines the Treasury has placed on all ARPA funding that's being regulated for households. Um, and this is certainly something that I have heard several times, not only from our own community, but from others, I can certainly, uh, sympathize with the concerns.
Um, I just wanna welcome Counselor Davila, thank you, Counselor Davila, for joining, can you pull up the income guidelines one more time? Cuz they fall in between low and moderate, correct?
Yeah, so it's either low income or moderate income, the two categories of, can you see that? There you go, and I'll send it over, um, as well, so you have that. But this is straight from the Treasury, they created a neat tool for you to be able to just put in your info for the city, and then you can put anywhere, really. And then find out what the, what the threshold would be per the Treasury for ARPA.
Okay, good, 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 Counselor Davila, since you haven't spoken, I'm gonna allow you to go next.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair, uh, uh, Melanie, thank you for, for your presentation of the documents. I just have a good question, just to be clear, uh, cuz I might be, I might be missing something here. Uh, the sixty households that are gonna be awarded the fourteen hundred dollars, is that a loan, or is that a grant?
Uh, neither, really, it's a, it's almost like a stimulus check, so it's going to mimic the same as what we receive for the federal level stimulus checks. So it's non-taxable, we're not requiring residents to be filing reporting requirements like they would for a grant.
Okay, so.
Counselor Hurst was talking about the loans, he was talking about the Healthy Homes program, just to be.
Okay, just to be clear, okay.
Tina's running along with the Neighborhood Economic Recovery, um, Fund, so we're gonna, uh, welcome, ask her to come to the next meeting to kinda like go over those, um. We could also ask Tim to come for the Build Better Springfield program.
Yeah, alright, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Melanie.
You're welcome, um, Counselor Govan?
No, I'm sorry, I'm all set, thank you.
Oh, I didn't know, yeah, and okay.
I apologize.
No, it was my fault, cuz I know you're driving, hold up. Alright, so we are gonna move right along. Melanie?
Alright, so the second page of the report has the budget, so it's just been updated since the last two weeks. Not much change again, other than the households, so, um, other than that, not much has changed within two weeks.
So the neighborhood councils have not used any of their funds?
So what we're doing with them is we're working on getting a budget laid out for them. So we've had a meeting with all of the neighborhood councils to kinda go over what are the, uh, type of categories of spending that they can have. Brainstorm ideas, and so Tina's working with them on finalizing those on paper, getting a budget and a scope for what they're looking to do. So that's the, I don't have the specifics as to how far along they are with that, but I know that they have definitely been in communication to finalize those. So that's why that hasn't been, um, spent yet, because we have to have a contract in place.
So Springfield Housing Authority was awarded one point eight million?
Yep, that's for the Gentile Apartments that we had the announcement back in May. So they need to have, uh, windows replaced over in the, uh, the complex there, because they are outdated. And so that funding will assist them with that.
And I think that exterior repair program is the one that is a cap of forty thousand.
I believe so, yeah.
Reserve, yeah, cuz I remember that, um, that one, but do you know who administers that one?
That's Tina, so it's the Healthy Home Repairs Exterior, and then the, the NERF or Neighborhood Economic Recovery Fund.
Yeah, we definitely gotta get Tina, alright.
Alright. Alright, so then the other page, oh, missed out the header there, I'll fix that later. Uh, so this is for, this is the same as last time, nothing has changed on this, this is what the awards that we've been making so far, so it's the same. We broke it down by the rounds in which the awards are made, how much, and what the category is. So the only thing that's changed from here, from last, the cup, last meeting that we had, was just the household awards that we added on here. So I'll fix that header, cuz it looks like it cut it off for some reason.
Now, I am gonna express my disappointment with the, um, wait, can you go back? Springfield Hospitality, Hospitality LLC is who? Down at the bottom.
Marriott.
Marriott, Marriott got a thousand dollars? Hmm, I mean, a million dollars, I'm looking for, um, the one Rafer Pellegrino got.
That's under the diff, that's under the Build Better Program, I gotta see, since it's a different program, if it's on here or not. No, it, that one's not on here, cuz that's one of the ones that Tim Sheehan's team has, so they were announced at the same time as the, the small business ones. But we can certainly add those, they're listed below where the contracts are, but they're not in the, in this particular one.
Okay, well, let's go to it, from the contract page.
So this is the contract page, same as before, we've added, um, on another page, I'll show you the demographic data. I couldn't add it on here because it's just too crowded and it'd be a little too messy, so I'll show you where all of that information is added. But here is where you'll see the status of all of our applications, whether they're complete, first check issued. Uh, whether the contracts are being finalized, so a lot of them are moving along the finalization of the contract phase, um, which is good. So there's a couple that we are still trying to, uh, finalize the contracts for, um, and we're almost at the end stage just for those. Including the, the Springfield Housing one that we just discussed.
Well, Stone Soul looks like it's in shape this year, five hundred thousand, um, can we go up a little bit? Montez Grill, okay, there was one, who is Gilmore Hospitality LLC that got a million? It's a small business.
I don't, oh, I think this is La Quinta?
Oh, probably, yeah, cuz I heard about La Quinta, and then we got, um, the Worthington Street LLC. That one's Rafer Pellegrino, he got two point four million dollars to rehab a property that he held the note on, then won the bid on. And then he got two point four million, and then he stopped worrying about the trash collection site that, um, he was fighting so hard for in the beginning. Um, that there were problems with, with the neighbors, so that one doesn't sit well with me, that two point four million. To somebody who is unknown wealthy, um, a wealthy person. When the residents of the city of Springfield are struggling just to get fourteen hundred dollars apiece, like that one. I'm very unhappy with, um. I mean, some of them, I just don't know who the people are, but I know who that one was just based on a conversation that I had. While I was, um, walking through Stern Square, so, I mean, we have to do better for our community. Um, Counselor Govan?
Thank you very much, um, and again, Counselor, um, Whitfield, exactly, you know, my point, right? So I'd like to know what the federal guidelines are around giving these people, um, that much money, you know what I mean? That much of this money, how much did they actually lose during the pandemic? Um, you know, based on, on what, what happened, right? And if we're doing that for people who have money and who don't have to worry about what the price of gas is. Then why aren't we doing that for people who are working every day and, you know, having an issue paying for the price of gas every day?
Right, and I can really understand it for like Springfield Housing Authority, because they actually, um, you know, do something for a certain population. But two point four million dollars for someone who is clearly rich or wealthy, and, you know. To renovate a property that he bid on, ha- held the note on, and, you know, probably was gonna win it anyway. Uh, that just all doesn't feel right to me, it doesn't feel right to me when we got people really, really struggling, calling me on a daily basis. And they haven't heard anything yet, and all I can say is we're working on it, we're working on it, but they're only gonna be able to get fourteen hundred dollars, fourteen hundred dollars. So we gotta do better, we gotta think of other programs that they may qualify for to, you know, at least really help them out of a binders. People who lost their jobs, and, you know, bills piled up. You're in the trickle of Fed, can't catch up from that, can't catch up from that, and then the situation, Lindsay and, um, Melanie, that I told you about my daughter. You know, she, she had to go back to work, there was no daycare available, none, so she had to pay people, sometimes on daily basis, sometimes on a weekly basis. And now she can't even recap all the money she used that was out of her hand, now has she been able to send my granddaughter to daycare? She qualified for a voucher, which she also lost, so when my granddaughter did get into a daycare, she's paying out of pocket. Two hundred fifty dollars a week, and that's on the cheap end, because it was a newer daycare. So, you know, this just all doesn't feel right to me, and, and yet there are so many stipulations on the people that really need it. So, you know, that program to me was created exactly for the purpose that it's being used for, to help some of the rich, white men. That do business in the city of Springfield, continue to do business in the city of Springfield, whatever kind of deals are being worked out. That's what that program, because it's historic district, you gotta know how to build, you gotta have the money to get an architect to, um, design the building and the historic manner. Like, there's just so many things that most minority contractors don't even know what to do, to even get that. And yeah, they're gonna have their couple of stories with minority, they got one with Donald, but it's ju, it just wasn't built for, um, the minority population, in my opinion. So I wanted to say that on the record, um, Counselor Hurst?
Just, just quickly, and I, I agree with all of you, I, I think we've, um, yeah, I think we, we all feel the same way. Melanie, what, um, uh, ah, I lost my train of thought. Sorry, it'll come back to me, sorry, Counselor.
That's okay, and then I wanna know one more thing about that, he asked for two point seven and got two point four. You got some, um, like the Center After School Program, and I know does a great job with some of our kids in the city of Springfield. Some of our most disproportionately impacted families, cuz it's the neighborhood there, and they asked for five hundred and fifty-three thousand, was only awarded a hundred thousand. You know, that's such a broad gap for such a smaller amount, and then a small gap for a larger amount, in my opinion. Just, this all doesn't feel right to me, so I'm hoping that with, um, you know, us going back to these meetings. That you're really listening to what we're saying and building programs that's more equitable, because, um, we gotta report back out to the community. And I wanna report good news, and I know you guys do too, so, um, I just wanted to say that.
Absolutely, and, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, Melanie, and then, I don't know, Counselor Govan, did you have something else to say, or?
No, I just wanted, you know, again, like you said, I really love that example of that gap in, um, you know. Between the, the request and what was awarded for a smaller entity like the Center, um, school. That does a great service to the community on a regular basis, I don't know what they did during the pandemic, but I imagine they must have, you know, been continuing to do their work. And then, you know, getting awarded only a hundred thousand dollars.
I think we're losing her, she must be driving again, so I'll definitely, um, circle back to her when she joins, Counselor Letterman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Lindsay, how can we, uh, get access to the applications themselves?
Well, it has a lot of, um, the applications for these, are you talking about for the awarded ones?
Or, for everything.
Well, we have all the access to them, it's over a thousand of them.
So if, if I wanted to review them, what would be the process to do so?
I'd have to confirm with, uh, law, but because they're not technically public, cuz they haven't been awarded, then you might have to submit a Freedom of Information Act request.
Is on the committee, because it, it said the city council president or a representative that he, um, designates. So he should by default be on the selection committee, and doesn't he get access to the applications anyway?
To the applications that are forwarded to the advisory committee, because they've been evaluated high, but it seems like the question is for all of the applications that have been submitted.
Okay.
To that point, Counselor Whitfield, I've received no invitation to any ARPA Advisory Committee meetings, and I, I have inquired with TJ relative to. Uh, what my status on that committee is and what my responsibilities are with regard to it, so I'm looking forward to, um, having that clarified by him and the administration. But with that said, you know, it would be my position that the city council is entitled to review any document in possession by the city of Springfield. And, um, we don't file Freedom of Information Act requests, we file subpoenas and review them in executive. And um, we don't file Freedom of Information Act requests. We file subpoenas and review them in executive session. So um, if that's necessary, then I'd like to know. But I think uh, it would be helpful as, as, as I evaluate and as, as my colleagues evaluate and oversee the expenditures. If we had the opportunity to get a little bit more context on some of the applications, it would be for me at least. Because as I look through it, I certainly have some questions as well relative to uh, some of the awards that are made or not made. And uh, rather than necessarily having to uh, set up an individual meeting with um, folks in the Finance Office to go through each application, it would be helpful, you know, in that context, we have the opportunity to just take a look at it. And maybe that would help, uh, at least on my end, understand certain things. So um, I can, I can forward, um, you know, a written request about that. But um, having the data is great and very important, but I, I think in some places, I'm looking for a little more information.
And one, one other in, um, piece of information I'm looking for, Melanie, and I don't know if it's in this document, is the um, total amount spent and what is still available. Um, I don't know if you have that budget. I know I requested ahead of time, but.
So, the budget section here?
Oh, okay. I didn't look at the total.
That's okay. So the actual amount is listed here. Anything that is encumbered and anything that's in a requisition uh, is all listed out here.
So the seventy-one, nine, forty-eight, six, fifty-three, the budget and amount. Uh, what, what's the difference between that and a hundred and twenty-three million? Because?
So, these are basically, so I, what I tried to do is whenever like a announcement is made on a program, for example, so like the Neighborhood Economic Recovery Fund, the mayor announced that he was gonna put twelve million on that. So that way you have a comparison as to what was allocated for it versus what has been spent. So that's the logic that's been used for the budgeted section.
So um, roughly a hundred and what, twenty, I mean, I'm sorry, um, sixty-some odd million? It's just not budgeted for, so it's just sitting on the side waiting to do something with it?
Yeah, basically. So some of these we haven't allocated like a set cap for, so there's no cap right now for like small businesses or for like new businesses. So this amount reflects how much like we've received and awarded um, out. And then this will show how much has been spent, but this is not a cap to that. So the remaining amount would go into however much more we award for the categories that don't have a cap.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yep. So then the other report which we have added on here is the demographics for the awards that have been made. So follow the same logic as the contracts above, you'll see the categories and then the award uh, or sorry, the, the name of the entity. Whether or not it's located in a QCT, whether it's minority owned, it's NA for any of them that are nonprofits, because obviously they're not owned. Uh, woman-owned, veteran-owned, and also serves minority populations, which is for the nonprofits. And so these are the categories in which are not only on the applications, but also when ARPA is reviewing our stats and our demographics. Those are the things that they're really looking at. And so I summarize it below for you for.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Don't go below yet, because I just want to note that the Worthington Street project, again, the only category that it fits is the QCT area. Um, and, but it's not serving the population that it should be serving. Um, it's not veteran-owned, it's not women-owned, it's not minority-owned. So I know that's one of the qualifications that qualifies it, but it just doesn't, is not, I don't know, is not right. Okay. I just wanted to note that.
And those, that project specifically, uh, when we have uh, Tim Sheehan and his crew, they have more information regarding that project to, to address. Um, and so below is the summary of all of the data that is above. And so what we have here is of the applications that we have awarded, fifty-eight are located in a QCT, which is seventy-three percent of the total applications. Thirty-six, which equates to seventy-eight percent, are minority-owned, and I broke it down by the different categories. So African-American is forty-six percent, twenty-two percent Hispanic, and Asian eleven percent. Uh, we also have uh, thirty-seven percent of the uh, awards women-owned, four percent veteran-owned businesses, and all of the nonprofits that were awarded serve minority populations. And that's the last report on this.
How can you say that when it's at the QTC? Um, the, the one that I was talking about didn't serve a minority population?
So the, the, this report isn't perfect because it serves minority population in this category is specifically for nonprofits because it, you can't, yes, because you can't put like minority-owned, woman-owned, or veteran-owned for these nonprofits. So the way that they review as to whether the nonprofit is eligible is, do they live in a, or do they work in a QCT? Or do they service minority populations? So those are things that we record when we're reviewing uh, applications that we receive from nonprofits. But that's not to say that businesses that we award also service minority populations. It's just not a criteria in which they evaluate as much as the other ones.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst.
I was just gonna say, that basically means everybody is eligible, or all businesses and all nonprofits are eligible, right? They all can make an argument that they serve a minority population or um, or are located in a QCT. Maybe not all of them located in a QCT, but certainly can make the argument that they serve minority populations. So uh, that's probably how um, well, I guess for that two point four million, it sounds like Rafer did both, was located in both a QCT and served minority populations, which is what I think they argue, so.
At the top, when, if you look at their business, can you go up, Melanie?
Yep.
Does serve minority populations. They're the Worthington Street one, and it says serve minority populations all the way to the right.
So again, this is because this category on this report is only for the nonprofits. So if it's a business in that serves minorities, uh, we don't have like a column that reports that. Sorry for the confusion.
No, no problem.
Yeah, and I, I, I think that was the argument that they made when they, when they gave it to them. I could have swore I read that somewhere, but um, now they hear nor they, they've been finding a way to work around the system, and I think that's probably what it is that they did with Rafer. My question to you, Melanie, is who is um, who was on the Advisory Committee again? That's who actually approves the applications?
So yeah, so the Advisory Board is consistent of Tim Sheehan, uh, TJ, Chase Swan, uh, Gladys Oyola. Uh, and then Marcus uh, Williams is also on the board.
And they approve the applications, they approve the award amounts and?
So what they do is they have, the before them, it has to go the application so long as it fits the criteria that we just went over. And they filled out all of the documents we asked for. It goes through an evaluation committee first. And so the evaluation committee gets a blind application. We redact all of the private information and they go through the RFP uh, score sheet. Is attached to all of the RFPs that I emailed uh, two weeks ago. And so whenever evaluations come highly advantageous for uh, any application, those applications are then forwarded to the Advisory Board for review. And so the Advisory Board, at that point, what they do is review the information, review what the request is, review whether or not they received other funding sources that could compensate for the things that they're asking for. And at that point, revise the budget or accept the budget or make a decision as to whatever it is that they want to do.
Okay, um, interesting. Uh, so I guess the only other thing that I'll point out, uh, as my colleagues start to highlight some of the things that uh, stood out to them and the awardees was that both the um, mental health uh, organizations, in my opinion, got shorted. Uh, millions of dollars versus what they requested. And, you know, we certainly know the impacts of, the impacts to folks' mental health as a result of COVID. And uh, I think Tracy mentioned after-school programs. Um, there also was um, you know, the Springfield Housing Authority received one point eight million. When you look at Boston, they received fifty million. And so uh, certainly their numbers appear to be a bit off there. And then when you also look at the, those individuals providing healthcare services uh, and communities of color uh, based off of, you know, a cursory look, it seems as though they, they received nowhere near what it was that, that they requested. And we certainly know how much they've done throughout the pandemic. So just my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Melanie, if I could just take you back for a second. Uh, I wasn't quite clear on the ledger. I was gonna ask the same question, the Counselor Whitfield did. Uh, the ledger on the budget that you refers to back. So, uh, first of all, the total amount that we approved was a hundred and twenty millions, hundred and twenty-three millions?
Yep.
Which one was it? Hundred and twenty, hundred and twenty-three?
Hundred and twenty-three.
Okay, and how much of that has been used so far, actually given up?
Yep, so if you see the uh, column here, that says actual twenty-four point two eight million is how much has been spent.
It's been spent. And what's this, but what the budgeted, the seventy-one, seventy-one million, seventy-one point nine million?
That's how much we've committed.
So where is the other twenty-five, twenty-seven million?
We haven't committed it yet.
Where is it?
It's sitting in the bank. We haven't committed it yet. So that's, that's why.
I know it's in the bank, of course. No, I know that, but it's not under anybody's uh, pillow. But under what line item?
It's not because we haven't spent it. So this is only showing you how much we've spent versus.
No, I understand it's in the bank, but how is it, it helped me understand, uh, and I'm not an accountant, so maybe I'm not asking my question right. So if I look at the city ledger right now, where will I see that twenty-seven billion dollars? In what, where? Where is, where does it live? I know it's in the bank.
Yep, you'll just see that there is a, an account that says ARPA. This is how much is spent, and then this is available amount.
Got you, got you. Okay, so we have spent hundred and twenty-three, excuse me, we have spent twenty-four million dollars.
Right.
Um, and the mayor committed seventy-one, seventy-two. Okay. Um, okay, uh, all right, that was my question. Thank you, Melanie. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Govan?
I'm home now, so I can see me. Um, so uh, picking, backing off of um, Counselor Davila's question. So there's seventy-one million dollars committed, twenty-four million dollars spent already. So that leaves up the twenty-five million for the residents of the city of Springfield. Or is that going to also be put into some type of a program? I see that seventy-four million has been committed for households. Does that include the seniors? And is that all that's being committed for the city of Spring, I mean, seventy-four thousand, I'm sorry? Um, is that all that's being committed for the, the residents or how does that, how is that gonna work, Melanie? Thank you.
Good question. So the households, we haven't said, and I can highlight some of these where this is like the cap. But the household amount here is not how much we've committed to give households. It's just how much the round that was announced lately was for seven, for five hundred. So as soon as we get more and more people, then that number will keep on going up and up. So for the remaining of balance, we don't have it allocated to anything at this point. So if we get a bunch of households and seniors that we start applying and providing funds for, or small businesses or nonprofits, there's not a cap right now for those categories.
Okay.
Want to keep increasing until it gets to a hundred and twenty-three, based on the amount of applications?
It'll continue, correct, increasing.
Mm-hmm, okay. Thank you, thank you very much. I, I guess my, I follow up. Would, are we able to say, you know, we're gonna commit?
It's about fifty million, guys, not twenty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the, with regards to commitments, that's a, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you talking still.
Yeah, that's, that was just my question. Is there a way for us to commit then fifty million, you know, to make sure that the seniors, the residents? Um, you know, and, and truly, truly small businesses, um, you know, get their share.
Yeah. So from my understanding, we don't have a cap simply because we want to provide flexibility based on need. Um, and that's what so far has been, you know, handed down uh, for us to do. As for if we want to do a cap, that would have to come from the mayor.
That's why um, Counselor Govan, I love what Counselor Letterman has been suggesting, suggesting since I've been on the council that when we approve these funds, we say, well, they need to come back to us for approval if they want to create a new program, because right now they got fair game, you know? So if they want to create another program like Build Back Springfield, they can't. They don't have to come back to us because we already approved the full amount of the hundred and twenty-three. And he's wary of that, not just with this particular funding, but other funding that we do the same thing.
Right. And Counselor Whitfield, if I may, um, is there any way for us to say, for example, look at the details of the Neighborhood Economic Recovery Fund, the Build Back Springfield um, program? Is there a quest to look at that and to see that?
Yep. Um, so that's under um, Tim's department. So the next meeting, we're gonna ask Tim and Tina and those guys to come and they can explain the um, Neighborhood Economic, the Build Back Springfield. Did you say the Neighborhood Councils too, Melanie?
Yes, correct.
In the Neighborhood Council. So we're gonna, I'm gonna, um, after this meeting, or maybe tomorrow morning, I'm gonna send a request to see if they can come to our next meeting in two weeks, and we could go over their programs. They could also send it in advance.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Counselor. Thank you, Melanie.
Um, Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I do find this meeting extremely fascinating and very informative. Thank you for, for putting it together. And Melanie, thank you for the excellent presentation. Uh, but Melanie, just to piggyback on my, my question, I was doing the basic math. So we approved a hundred and twenty-three billion dollars. The administration committed seventy-one point nine million dollars. Of that seventy-one point nine, we spent twenty-four million so far. Which is giving us forty-seven point nine million dollars still available to give out in ARPA money in what I believe is gonna be future rounds. But I do believe the mayor says in various occasions that there will be multiple rounds. Now, the fifty-one point one that is in the bank right now, uh, which is what's left out, that was not committed. Uh, by when do we have to commit that money to be, to be, when does have to be allocated and by when do have to be spent?
ARPA says that we have to basically make commitments full by December twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four. Okay, commitment, but it has to be paid out by December twenty-six?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So we have to encumber and make commitments by December twenty twenty-four and spend twenty twenty-six.
That includes that fifty-one point one million dollars that was not committed.
Correct. Any dollar amount under this ARPA bond.
So basically, if I understand you correctly, Melanie, the full amount, the full monte of a hundred and twenty-three, hundred and twenty-three million dollars has to be spent under the program.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Um, very well. And, and last, Madam Chair, this is just a general comment. Uh, I'm sure that is no fault of anybody. Things have been a little crazy lately. I am a little uh, surprised that the council personally has not been invited to a meeting. I will urge that decision be rectified immediately, uh, whether it's the president or his designate. Uh, you know, because we do need to continue uh, making sure that this money is spent appropriately. Uh, with that being said, Melanie, thank you so much for your work. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, for that comment. Um, I agree with that statement. We need some oversight from the council on what's going on as well. So the sooner we can get um, Counselor Letterman going, um, the better it is for us and our understanding. And he certainly can bring the information back to us um, in the meetings as well. So I um, agree with that sentiment. Um, Melanie, were we done with um, all of the?
Yes, we went over all of the reports. The last one was the demographic info we went over.
Okay, so, well, I'm, I'm happy with the report. Um, you know, there's some things that's just hard to understand. One thing that I think, I don't even know if you can add it, but of the applications that were submitted, um, do we know the demographics of those or not yet? Because these, like.
We do, but the main focus we do is once awarded, simply because the volume is so high. Um, so as soon as they get to like the higher levels, is when we start putting the data into like the demographic section that we keep. But we can certainly try to do the best we can with the data we have. It's just we have a lot.
Yeah, you got a lot. And you gotta get checks out, and I think that's more important. I mean, equally is important, but I think it's more important to get some of these, some of this money out of the um, door. And before I turn it over to Counselor Hurst, can you just explain how you got a new system and how it's gonna help process the checks quicker?
Yep. So what we're doing right now is we're, there's a couple, a lot of things we're doing right now. But we have finally a full staff where we're going over and reviewing all of the applications that we have. So we are actually working uh, with a consultant to have all of the data mass imported essentially into our financing system so that once they are qualified, we can cut out the checks for them on a quicker basis than what we have been able to do uh, before. So it's been tremendously helpful for these round of awards that we are about to uh, uh, mail out on Monday. So we are in the process of communicating with all of the awardees on that. So that's been extremely helpful.
Sorry, guys, sorry about that. I had, I had a quick emergency, you know?
Melanie, I had just asked for the um, the times in which folks submitted their application. If we could. Uh Melanie, I had just asked for the um the times in which folks submitted their application. If we could find a way to kinda weave that in. That that would be helpful if there's enough space on that spreadsheet.
I uh I will be, uh yeah, that's gonna be difficult just because all of them are paper files. So that's why we're trying to do them on uh digitally. So we have all these timestamps. It's not possible for us to know at one point somebody dropped off an application at Capley. And when we picked it up, we do twice pickup pickups twice a week. So it's a little bit difficult in that sense. So we don't track that because of that. But once we start going digital with these applications to streamline it, at that point, we will have timestamps for those. It's just the unfortunate nature of having paper applications sent.
But can't we at least stamp the date that it was received?
Yeah, we could certainly do that. It's just not something that I would be able to provide you with the ones that we've had. So that's why we haven't been able to add it.
But there is information on the application because you can have the date at least that they signed the application.
Yes, correct. It's just not data that we've been. Yeah, so what we do is we'll go in the order in which applications are received. So they receive a application nor a number that goes in numerical order to ensure that we are going, in fact, in the order that they're received.
Got it. Okay. All right, Counselor.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Dagla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh Melanie, uh let me put my hand down real quick. Uh Melanie, uh if you have a calculator with you, maybe you can help me do some quick math, just making sure that I'm doing it right. And again, going back to some basic math here. Oh, boy. Oh, boy. Give me a second. So the first page, page number one. Melanie, uh it says here that we have a total of one thousand six hundred and twenty-five applications. That's everybody under every category, whether it's household, exterior repair, Echo Dev, seniors. And out of that one thousand six hundred and twenty-five, only hundred and thirty-nine applications have been awarded. When you say awarded, does that mean check given to them in cash or fuck contract finalized or contract pending?
Oh, we're committed. So it could be at any phase, whether it's contract or a check has been issued or it's been finalized.
Or pending.
An award that's been committed to people.
Or or so it could be pending, haven't received the check yet. It's in the process of. So if you plug it in or do in your head the math of this, is that eight percent of the applications?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't afraid you were gonna say yes, Melanie. Um I have to say, I find that extremely low. Uh and I pointed out, because I remember a good attorney, uh Thomas Moore, uh who had emphasized to us at the beginning many, 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 many times that we're gonna try to work with those that were turned down so that they could get approved. Uh and I'm sure that still holds true. But honestly, I'm having a lot of like, I'm trying to understand why so many people get rejected. Basically, that's what the numbers tell.
So these aren't rejections. So this is just because they're still in the process of approval. So um just to recap for you.
Okay.
What we've been discussing with other meetings is that over sixty, seventy percent of all the applications that we perceive it, especially if under the small business category, are incomplete, meaning that they don't have the applications submitted completely. And so those applications haven't been awarded, but they're in the process of review with all of the information that's been provided. So this is not because of uh a hold on our end. It's more so ensuring that we're receiving all of the documents that are necessary uh for the federal guidelines and also to be in compliance with Treasury.
So oh, sixty percent. So do we actually have the category? And thank you for that clarification, because when you first look at it, that's what what will appear. So I'm very glad to hear that they're not rejected. They're pending.
Still in the process.
Location in the process now.
Right.
Do we actually have people that we have seen? No, you don't qualify?
We have. There's some individuals that have applied that don't live in the city of Springfield, and so they're not eligible. Um so we're currently working on a process of communication to those individuals. Um so we have businesses that have applied from towns over residents that have applied that are not from here. So automatically that makes them ineligible for funding.
Okay, and and what about our residents that live here? Do you, can you think of without speaking of any particular case, a situation which they might have been, say, you don't qualify for X, Y, Z reason?
We haven't gotten to that point yet because they're still finalizing the ineligible guidelines based off of the final rules that have been set. So an example that I could come up with uh that we haven't done yet, but I guess I can think of is if a business is saying that they have lost forty thousand dollars in revenue and we are able to prove that uh with the information that they provided us, but they got a hundred thousand dollars in PPP uh loans, then that's something where you can justify, because per ARPA, they say you shouldn't be providing funds that exceed the loss. And so if they've already reconciled and exceeded that loss, and that's something where you have to consider, okay, is this something that requires more funding? Was there additional losses? Uh so that's something that we're currently developing.
Okay, all right. Uh Madam Chair, I would like to make a see if I look possible. I I am very glad with this report. I think it's very helpful. But I also would like to see some sort of a report into the people that are like Melanie just said that are still pending, they haven't even approved, or for what reason they were not approved yet. Uh and uh uh those people that uh just don't qualify the reason, I think that will be also will help us, at least in my mind, paint a better picture of what's happening here. Uh because when you first look at those numbers, uh I've still looked at it a little carefully. I'm like, okay, it's only eight percent. That's too low. So uh is that some possible, there's something Melanie we can produce?
Yeah, we could definitely look and see how we can generate a report to show a little bit better on the the status.
Uh, okay, very well. Uh Melanie, you can thank you, uh Madam Chair. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Davila. Thank you, Melanie. And after I say this final comment, um I'm gonna let Counselor Letterman have the final word because it's almost five thirty. I don't like to keep the meeting past an hour. Um so I just wanted to say that also from my recollection of what Chase Juan's role was, was he was supposed to provide technical assistance to help these businesses get to where they need to be. And now he's doing it on the back end. So I would also like to have him come in and explain what he's doing now because um has his, has his role transitioned off of ARPA?
Nope. He's still working with ARPA. Yep.
He's still working with ARPA? Because I would like to know what he's doing now, since he's not helping too much with the technical assistance, or is he?
Yes, he's doing so. Uh like I mentioned in the last meeting, we had to divvy out the technical assistance for those that are in the pre-award phase versus the post-award phase. So now that we have awards, a lot of compliance piece and technical assistance is being provided to those awards. Because it's not as simple as just, you know, provide a check and that's it. We have to ensure that what they are saying that they're spending on is accurate, that they're in compliance with federal regulations. And some of the information on larger projects could be a little bit more time consuming than the smaller ones. So he's mostly focused on that, but we also, the two of us, focus on technical assistance for any applications that are pre-award that require a little bit of an extra help to get their application moving forward. So that's something that we've also been providing.
Thank you, Melanie.
Yep.
For that explanation. And Counselor Letterman, you will have the final word, and then we will call the meeting.
Uh thank you, Madam Chair, and uh and thank you, uh Melanie, and to your whole team for being here to to answer our questions. It's really very much appreciated and is a big help to us as we answer questions in the community. Um I had one point uh is I wanted to ask, are these reports, as you present them to us today, available online?
No, but we, they will be. So we're actually revamping the website right now. So once we upload the new application for household, we're also going to be uploading all of the reports that we've been providing to city councils. So they're available there. So it's currently under construction. So as soon as that's all done, we will definitely let you know.
That's great. I I think that the more information that's publicly available and accessible um is a good thing for everybody. So I'll look forward to seeing those reports posted. Um I did send you an email um just a little while ago. I won't ask about them here, but I did have some inquiries from individuals um directly um who were looking for some status updates. So I hope we can connect about that offline. And uh the only other thing I would say is relative to the technical assistance. We don't have to talk about it now because I know we're we're coming up on the end of the meeting, but um you know, I think to just reiterate what we talked about two weeks ago in terms of looking forward to seeing the actual on-the-ground assistance for seniors and households and businesses, um you know, in person and virtually. Thank you.
And we are definitely working on that. We're settling dates right now for those outreach events. So as soon as we get those finalized, I will be sharing that with the council.
Thank you, Counselor Letterman. Thank you, Melanie. Counselor Govan has one final comment. I promise you we will end it. But I did wanna mention that they have done a great job getting um more consultants in to help with data. They got data consultants in. They got folks to help them with the backend of the um website. So they are really um trying to make the data more user friendly. And um I commend them on the short amount of time that Melanie has been there. I understand what's going on um a lot. Better not taking anything away from Tom, because I know it's a lot to do the research and try to figure out the laws. And I know that he cobbled a lot of that together. But just getting the data and hearing the information is much more clear than it than it has been. So thank you for that. Counselor Govan, Counselor Letterman, were you done? Your hand's still up.
Oh, no, I just forgot to take it down, Madam Chair. I'm all set.
Okay, also the Govan can't hear, so she can go ahead.
I don't see her here anymore.
No. Oh, okay then. So well.
Oh, she said she had another commitment.
Oh, another commitment. Okay, I thought she said she had another comment. Well, good then. We're all set. Everybody got their questions answered. So thank you. Thank you for the information. I know we keep adding more and more. But if as long as it's clear for us, we can clearly communicate it to the community. So
We're happy to help.
For your hard work.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Have a good one, everybody. Take care.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Good day.
You too.